Evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Madison Public Schools Board of Education meeting to order. We go eyes and say pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united as one.
Thank you. So we always start with our school slash community session and public participation. And Emily gives us a little recitation of the rules.
Yep. So it's good to see so many people in person. We do welcome public comment at our meetings. We do limit them to three minutes to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. When speaking, we ask that you state your name and your address. If you are joining us in person, you can just raise your hand. If you're joining us online, you can also raise your hand online when you're called upon. Meetings like tonight's are not an opportunity for discussion, so there shouldn't be expected that there will be a back and forth. Is there anyone in person would like to speak at this time? Is there anyone online? So, all right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we move on to the Board of Education Student Representatives Report with Emi Ackerman and Brooke Anderson.
Nice to meet you. Welcome. Tomorrow on the bridge, we have voter registration for students Saturday evening are going to be eaten by the time coming elections are up. And we just wanted to give shout out to our teachers because it's Teacher Appreciation Week. And a shout out to our nurse because tomorrow is Nurses Appreciation Week. So thank you to them and all the great things that has been for our school. And at the end of this week, as soon as you get all of the dates and times for this end of the year activities like senior prom and graduation, all the assemblies that we have.
Along with it being Teacher Appreciation Week, it is also the day of AP Testing Week. So this is for mostly juniors and seniors, but the teachers have been super accommodating and supportive, like keeping our mental health in mind. So we've kind of like had less tests, other types of tests going on. So I think it's been going pretty great. I mean, as great as it can be. And the day to clear off your calendar, if you didn't know already, is Wednesday, May 15. It's a pre-packed day during the during the actual school day. The juniors will have a pre-prom assembly. This will talk about like good decision making and everything to make sure that prom remains fun and like as little hiccups as possible. And this prom will be taking place on May 17th, and it'll be at Woodlands. And during the evening of May 15th, there'll be the DHHS art show from 6:00 to 7:30 with a award ceremony on the bridge around that 7:30 mark. And this differs from the last art show, which was the K-12 art show, because this is just only high school students work and not the other grades. And afterwards, right after, at 7:30 is the band concert. So we're going from visual art to performing art. So it'll be a very packed day for everyone.
Questions for our student representatives? I have one quick question. You mentioned the AP tests. I know that we've been piloting programs to do some AP tests and prep in certain of the courses. Have you have either of you known anybody who's taken the prep and they find it helpful? So that'd be helpful.
Prep meeting, like teachers offering time after school. Yeah, I did it last year because I had a bunch of tests I said. It definitely worked. I know the test prep sessions that I would go to, I did better on those tests. And the teachers know what's going to be on the test by the end of the house. So, you know, you come up to YouTube, you know, help, but the teachers, they do a really good job. And I think what helped most in those sessions is that they'll have you ask questions. So you can talk about specifically what you need the most help with. So I found them very helpful.
And the other thing is, most of them are after school. Like the kids who do after school, like music classes, it's pretty tough to always go to them. But I'm like, even though you're not allowed to take the AP material out of the classroom for at least some of my classes, the teachers are bothered also like incorporating it during the normal class day, which has been also super.
Very helpful in those. Thank you. And unless there are any other questions, I think you should run long and get ready for your AP test.
Thank you both.
Good luck.
Okay. Next, we have the Superintendent's Report, which includes some special awards. Dr. Cook.
Yes, thank you Chairman Klascan, and it's great to see so many people here tonight. Just a quick note, we usually do have air conditioning in this building. We are going through a project. So please bear with us. If you can't hear, just let us know or turn off the remaining fans that are going. But we're just trying to stay a little little cool as as much as possible. This is always one of my favorite nights of the year. Also, I know the board because we don't always get so many people here. But we're also recognizing some amazing students and we get to do so for both Paulson and Daniel Hand. So that's always a great event. The CAVE Award, which is the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, is also special for the Board to award because it is it is from boards of education. So just a quick note on that, it's a student leadership award. It includes seventh and eighth grade students along with high school students who exhibit exemplary leadership skills, including a willingness to take on challenges, concern for others, diplomacy, and ability to honor a commitment. Two students from each school in a CAVE member district are eligible to receive the CAVE Student Leadership Award. Students are nominated by their school principal. So she makes it very special. So I will start with Paulson and Catherine Hart. Let us have her to come forward and recognize our Paulson students.
Thank you very much. And at Paulson, we actually recognize students by any grade who we put out to all the teachers in eighth grade and ask for their input. So out of 185 students, we narrow it down to two, which honestly is pretty tough to do, but it's a great group of kids. And we run all that information by student, by related arts teachers as well. So everybody gets some input to be able to nominate these two award winners for tonight. So to start with that, I'd like to call up Elle Bradenberg. So Elle Bradenberg embodies the essence of academic excellence, leadership, and community, making her a worthy recipient recipient of the prestigious CAVE Award. She excels academically, consistently showing a strong commitment to her studies. But the respect she holds from students and staff goes well beyond good grades. It starts with her ready smile. Elle absolutely radiates positivity and enthusiasm. Whether she is entering a classroom, heading into the office, or walking down the hall, she smiles. Whether she knows you personally or not, she smiles, making everyone feel like they are truly seen, like they matter. It's easy to see why she inspires anyone around her. Elle is a born leader, and she leads with grace, humility, and acquired competence. For example, she is heavily involved in Excel Club and Student Council, where she is equally at home taking charge of a program or supporting the initiatives of others. Need help with a project like hanging kindness posters around the school? Ask Elle. Need an honest perspective about an idea or program? Ask Elle. She is empathetic and possesses a genuine concern for the well-being of others, collaborating with all and advocating for those who need support. It's clear that her contributions in school are not about personal growth. They're about enriching the entire school community. There is no doubt that in anything she undertakes, Elle will continue to make meaningful contributions with a boundless optimism that will inspire others and leave a lasting impression on Madison Public Schools and the world around us. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm so grateful to receive this award. I just want to say thank you to my family and my friends for always being my biggest supporters, my biggest cheerleaders, and always believing in me with whatever I set my mind to. I love you guys all so much. Thank you. And I want to give a huge thank you, especially for Teacher Appreciation Week, to all the teachers and mentors that I've had throughout the course of my life for shaping me into the person that I am today. Especially to the teachers, I see all the time empathy and dedication that teachers put into their job, which isn't always easy. And I have so much appreciation and respect for them. So thank you so much.
So our next recipient is Matthew Ackman. So Matthew Ackman is a student of exceptional character, dedication to service, and academic excellence, which has earned him the esteemed CAVE Award. In the classroom, Matthew performs at high levels at high levels across the board, and teachers are impressed with his strong work ethic. His dedication transcends academics, however, as seen in his leadership roles in the building. With a genuine commitment to service and a natural ability to inspire others, he leaves an indelible mark on Paulson in all he does. For example, as part of Student Council, he participated in our World Day, a joint effort between Paulson and a neighboring middle school, where students collaborated to develop and present information on countries across the globe. As part of pit helpers, Matt demonstrates an inclusive approach and ability to bring people together, which has made him a role model for peers and younger students in the school community. It's no surprise then that he is currently spearheading a new bulletin board project centered on inclusivity and unity. Whether he is meeting with administration, creating plans, or adjusting strategies when faced with challenges, Matt's strong communication skills and his commitment to leading Paulson a better place are evident. Thank you, Matthew, for inspiring us and making a difference in the lives of others around you. We know we know you'll continue to do so for years to come.
First off, I'd like to thank my family for being here. My biggest inspirations throughout my life, and they will continue to be so. I'd also like to thank faculty of Paulson for not only being nominated, but also choosing me to win the award. Very grateful for that. I'm the youngest in my family, youngest of four. And I see that that has some pros and cons. You know, I never really got to. I never got to choose what channel on TV we'd watch. And I I got a phone when I was 12. And that's nice. And one of the greatest pros I think I have of being the youngest is seeing what my siblings did, and not only their extracurriculars, but also how they interacted with others. I was able to see how they managed their sports and how they managed their work, all culminating together. And I was able to take notes from what they did and how they were able to be. And I tried to put my own spin on it as well. And now I'm here. I'd like to thank everybody for that.
If you wanted to maybe the photos with Matt and then the photos with Elle and then Paul's families are welcome to go. Then it was quite warm.
All right. So we'll do this group first. All right, ready? One, two, three. Do the parents want to take any or good?
Come on out, Ackerman's.
Yeah.
Come on, Eli. Come on over.
Not what I want.
Yeah, smile, Eli.
Sure you hit Eli's room or something?
Ready? One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Josh, very much.
And then Elle and family, if you ever want to come up.
Thank you.
One, two, three. Oh, yeah, sure. Family?
Oh, thank you so much.
I'm just going to take some pictures.
If you want to be in it, I'll share them. All right. Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Daniel Hand, principal, TJ Salatary. Salatary.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Thanks to Board of Ed for having us. Great night. I love being here for the CAVE Award. And just for our two high school recipients, there's zero pressure to say anything after. If you're wondering what happened, Mr. Salatary said we don't have to say anything. You don't. But you're absolutely good if you want to. That was a new and really good twist. So, you know, again, we're a high school with great students. So just being in a conversation to be nominated for one of these types of recognition is incredible. We have two excellent students that I'm really proud to work with and present to you this evening. Sarah, we're going to go first. So fun up. And you could stand here probably uncomfortably in the live. A lot of really positive things about you. And then, you know, if you want to say a few words, zero pressure. So Sarah Hagan is a tenacious, compassionate, dedicated, and independent young adult. Her warm and welcoming personality makes her a light in any room she enters. Sarah jumped into the high school experience with two feet, making an impressive impact on her teachers and the entire DHHS community. Sarah has succeeded in balancing a challenging schedule with ease. She has excelled academically while being deeply involved in athletics at DHHS and volunteering in the community. Sarah loves learning in the areas of science and hopes to apply her passion to the study of chemistry in the future. She is a talented student who has grown exponentially by taking on new challenges and responsibilities. Sarah enjoys making connections with teachers and students and has pushed herself beyond her comfort zone to join clubs and activities. She is an organized, active participant in her classes, always willing to volunteer and lead groups. Academically, Sarah performs at a high level, landing her in the top 10 of her class. She is committed to challenging herself each year by taking her highest level courses. She has been on the high honor roll her entire high school career and has received the Seal of Bileiteracy in Latin in 2023. She has won many awards for her commitment to academic success, including the Tulane University Book Award, which is awarded to a student for community service and leadership. She has earned multiple DHHS departmental and PTO recognition for excellence in art, English, social studies, science, and orchestra. These recognitions demonstrate the intelligence and dedication Sarah has across various curricular areas. Last school year, the faculty nominated Sarah for the APA Laurel Girl State, where she attended a week-long training and immersion in a mock government. In 2023, Sarah received one of the highest honors at DHHS for her induction into the National Honor Society. Sarah has grown and developed through these academic experiences, learning how to manage her time and achieve a balance in both her school and personal life. Her drive to succeed continues as her challenging coursework during her senior year certainly confirms. In addition to her commitment to academics, she is also dedicated to her community and extracurricular involvement. She has engaged in an extension extensive number of clubs where she has been involved for three years and currently holds leadership positions. These include recognized presidents of the Giving Back Club, president of the debate team, secretary of UNICEF, and captain of our fencing team. She also plays violin in our chamber orchestra, and she has joined the Shoreline Youth Symphony Symphony Orchestra, which she has made the regional competition in 2022. Although time does not seem like something Sarah has much of, she volunteers extensively at the Guilford Art Center and the Guilford Library. She has been a tutor at DHHS, supporting students with chemistry, algebra, one essay. All of these commitments outside of the classroom are examples of Sarah's caring nature and dedication. Sarah is successful and humble. She is a true leader and a driven young woman. There is no doubt she will continue on a path of success as a motivated, bright, dynamic, and truly special young woman who is very well deserving of this recognition. Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't have much to say, but I would like to thank my family and my teachers and all my classmates and teammates for supporting my teacher roles. I really appreciate that.
One, two, three.
Thank you. I know.
Cooper, you ready?
Yeah.
Come on. The anticipation of waiting, right? Worse than being up there. So Cooper had a track meet today. His school bus got sideswiped in New Haven. Thankfully, everyone was okay. We didn't make it here in time, but you made it. It is a really cool. We're excited to be here.
So Cooper Dunsmore is an impressive young man who is thoughtful, compassionate, dedicated, and independent. He has balanced an incredibly challenging schedule with ease and has excelled in academics while being deeply involved in clubs and volunteering. Some would refer to Cooper as a Lego kid. And to this day, still loves to build, especially things that move like cars, boats, planes, and trains. He loves learning in all academic areas and beyond high school, is planning to apply his skills to engineering, possibly aerospace. Cooper is a mature and engaged learner who finds ways to participate and connect to the class and the curriculum. He participates to his full capability, including helping others. He works collaboratively to share his knowledge and is willing to lead groups and discussions. Academically, Cooper performs at a very high level, finishing in the top 10 of his class. He has committed to challenging himself by taking more demanding courses each year. He received the Seal of Bileiteracy in Spanish last year and has been on the high honor roll his entire high school career. In 2023, he received DHHS Department Awards for Academic Excellence in Math, Word Language, and Science. He is an active member of our music department, playing percussion in our symphonic band and leading the marching band as a percussion section leader. Cooper also plays in our jazz band and showband. Last year, Cooper was awarded for his excellence in academics, mathematics, and natural naturally sciences from Clarkson University and from the Society of Women Engineers. In the spring of 2023, Cooper received one of the highest honors at DHHS through his induction into the National Honor Society. Cooper has grown and developed through these academic experiences, learning how to manage his time and achieve a balance in both his school and personal life. In addition to his dedication to academics, Cooper has made a positive impact through his extracurricular activity involvement and his connections to the community. He is a dedicated member of the indoor and outdoor track team where he competed at the New England and National Levels. Outside of DHHS, Cooper continues to spread his musical abilities in the community. He plays house band for our local school rock, plays for our elementary schools with the jazz band, and participates yearly with our marching band during the Memorial Day parade. He also has extensive volunteer hours, over 300, with the Share the Wind Sailing Camp, where he teaches younger children how to sail small sailboats at the surf club. In his free time, he quotes, "He works as a marine attendant at yacht management systems to clean and wax boats during the summer months." Cooper's success demonstrates his natural leadership and ability to connect with younger students, peers, and all members of our school community. He is an exceptionally driven young man who is no doubt already on the path to success. His body of work over the past four years has been incredible. Cooper is truly a special young adult who is very well deserving of this recognition. Congratulations.
First off, I want to thank you and all of you guys and the faculty and staff at Daniel Hand. Couldn't have done like anything, like none of us could do anything without all you guys and the work you do behind the scenes. And it's just, you know, really incredible what you guys manage to pull off every year and, you know, have a great school community that everyone I know loves to be a part of. And then my parents and family and my sisters aren't here, but they certainly helped to, you know, driving me around everywhere and things like that. But, yeah, couldn't have done it without you guys as well as the faculty. And Coach Geary isn't here, but shout out to him as well. And yeah, thank you. I'm incredibly grateful.
Official picture first, a parent picture?
Perfect. The parents want to join as well?
Congratulations. Do you get it one side? Come on.
All right. Ready? One, two, three.
Good. Thank you. It can stay for a few years. Congratulations.
That's fun. Okay, well, that couldn't have been perfect, more perfectly set up for a teacher.
Okay, well, that couldn't have been perfect, more perfectly set up for teacher appreciation week and that. Everyone who spoke and including our student refs mentioned the teachers, faculty, and in terms of their support for their success. So as we start off teacher appreciation week, I want to thank Madison's three hundred teachers. From preschool to Mandarin, you know, our Madison teachers have just amazing skill sets that they bring to their classes and the courses they teach. When we ask families what they like the most about Madison Public Schools, I get to some like to share stories about the teachers and how they go above them. I'm thrilled to have Mike Ginsberg here with us again this this year as MEA president. I know he wants to say a few words. I appreciate Mike, not only as an excellent teacher, a master teacher, and and what he does with the students, but also the way he supports his his members. And, you know, the way he goes about his professionalism in Madison for twenty-five years.
For the nap, right?
They're gonna go long. Then go to life. So Mike, if you come forward.
I'm going to be very agree because it is warming here. Can't compare to those kids. So, but I just want to say thank you to everybody. Just know everybody's appreciation is met with a bunch of gratitude on all the teachers. We appreciate all that you guys have been doing for us every year. Thank you.
Thank you. And on both of these areas we have throughout the the week, recognition I know from both the schools and then also definitely from the PTO. PTOs do a fantastic job, so I want to just thank them as as well for everything they do to help us recognize teachers and our school nurses. So we'll leave right into our our school nurses. School Nurse Appreciation Day is tomorrow, and we have Stephanie Lesnick with us. We have six school nursing physicians. We have seven. We have a job share this year that, you know, we're we're thrilled to be able to staff all our our nursing physicians. It's a shortage countrywide, statewide certainly, but also school nurses is a, you know, pretty big shortage in the nurses area. So, you know, the nurses in our our schools do care for students from, you know, just daily providing meds to broken bones and access. And we are thrilled that they are non-staffed to be able to handle for us. They support our students both physically and emotionally so often throughout the the year. So I'd like to ask Stephanie to come forward and be recognized and say a few words.
I actually want to see TJ's offer and not speak if that's a little option. No, I I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to acknowledge all the nurses who are here representing that. You know, a lot of my moms and not able to be out on the evening like this, so they all send their appreciation to for Dr. Cook and their administration in their buildings for the support that they get on a daily basis. You know, I'm I'm I feel fortunate as a mom of students of students in this town that all of our buildings are staffed in school nurses. I think that's critical as we look at changes in our structure, our school system, really placing a value in the health office. And however that structure is laid out, really shows your value, the new place in the health office and what those nurses are doing, what their health professionals, health professionals are doing in those offices. So I thank you for your support in that. Dr. Cook has been obviously very supportive of us, but you know, most recently, he's. He's helped us fund some vision screeners, which have been really important for our state mandated physical state mandated screenings that we need to do for vision screenings for our youth. And that, just in a nutshell, has cut down the amount of time that our nurses are spending doing state screenings for vision specifically. It's really facilitated and expedited that process, which allows our nurses to be with our kids doing what they need to on a daily basis. So small things like that, you know, it it matters. It really puts our nurses so that they're seen and that their job is valued and the presence is valued. So I thank you. I'm appreciative to the nurses that I work with and the health office professionals. Like, Mrs. Drake is. My my right hand and my left most of the time. So, you know, it's all. It's all very, they're very well structured. So thank you. And I appreciate you taking your time to thank us.
Thank you, Stephanie. Mike, can you also get the embrace and leave if you? And so next we have a brief presentation on two very important topics, two changes that will occur for for next year. Mr. South here is going to come forward and two of the most important things we do is school attendance, you know. And that's be a very close attention of this from preschool on up. But certainly being in school is is one of the most important things for our students to be able to to learn. So we want to encourage and also adjust to things that have happened. And I think we're trying to be a little proactive here in Madison as as the board knows from our accountability report, always said good student attendance. And we do expect that that will will jump a little bit this next report. I just want to give you that. That heads up not in a great way, you know, rather than in a way that we're we're not, we weren't hoping it would. But as we track student attendance throughout the year, we are seeing some higher absenteeism. And we're going to touch on some of the reasons for that and the ways that we can work with other students to have that and improve. And also academic integrity, which is something, again, we're trying to respond to, you know, kind of some new things out there. The board's done a lot of work on AI and and, you know, part of this is in response to that, but I think also part of it is just looking at best practices and ways we can do things a little bit better. So I thank TJ for his work in this area. He really has led this. He's worked with legal counsel. He's checked with other districts. He's worked a lot with central office staff. So I appreciate that. So I'll turn it over to Mr. South here.
Great, Dr. Kirk. Thanks for the time, and I'll be brief, but you know, feel free to jump in with questions, happily answer them. Spent a lot of time, including the conversations with faculty, the work with or changes to academic integrity. We spent some time with the senior class officers, just because they would be the most honest with us because this won't pertain to them and they really have some great feedback. But we're going to jump right in and take a look at school attendance. So just, I wanted to give just a very brief overview. I'm not sure everyone's totally aware, so if you are, I apologize. But all students in public school are allowed nine excused absences every single year, as long as a parent or guardian informs the school within ten days of those nine absences. After the tenth absence and beyond, those are typically unexcused absences unless they fit in certain categories, which are listed above. The information that is detailed in red, where you can see state allowed mental health wellness days. As I'm sure you recall, the state added two mental health days for students ever since the impact of COVID, which makes a lot of sense. And what we're doing with our transition with how we document the mental health days. If students use those mental health days within the first nine absences, they count towards the first nine absences. And that would be an excused absence and never actually be allowed to come to extracurricular events like participate in sports, for example. That's currently in place. If a student was to use up their initial nine absences for, let's say, their sick nine different occasions, and they had two additional mental health days. Those still count as excused, even though they're beyond the nine, and that's allowable. And that's the approach we're recommended to take. So it depends when the students take them. They still get the two mental health days that they currently have. They just can't be consecutive. And if they're in the first nine, they count towards the nine. If they're beyond it, they're two additional excused absences. So that is a change to our current practice where we just counted them as additional at this time. But looking at the impact of these, we thought it was time to move them into the initial nine as, you know, conversations with a lot of the people Dr. Cook mentioned. College visits, this is a significant change from moving forward, but this is the current language in our handbook that all students are allowed three college visits per year, which is excessive. You know, we've been watching this over the years. That's a significant amount of time away from school. It also states we could ask for documentation, which we sometimes do. Transitioning to much more detailed approach to college visits for juniors, for juniors and seniors only. They're allowed up to two college visits per year. Those two college visits would have to be pre-approved. We have a tidy little form that students would fill out in advance, hand into their assistant principal. It would be considered an excused absence within those one through nine. And the benefit of that excused absence in advance, if it's a college visit, if a student went to a local college or university and they could get back to school. If they have any extracurricular activities after school, or if it's a Friday visit and they have any activities over the weekend, they can participate in those activities. If a student exceeded their nine excused absences and they filled out the preapproval, and maybe a little more specific, if a junior or senior. Filled out the preapproval form and it was absence number ten, it would be an unexcused absence because it's beyond. But we wouldn't penalize the student because it's preapproved with after-school activities or weekend activity involvement, which we think is really fair. This would be a pretty significant change. Now, could a freshman or a sophomore use an unexcused or an excuse me, an excused absence for one through nine for a college visit? Yes, of course they can. A parent can make that phone call in. They wouldn't get preapproval. The significant difference is they would not be able to engage in after-school activities. You know, if that was the scenario. And we see, you know, the college visit process should be dedicated to juniors and seniors in that process. It has been too excessive and like Dr. Cook mentioned in the beginning, you know, attendance at school is really important. And this this will be a significant change moving forward. We plan to do a lot of communication over the summer at the start of the school year as well, so our students are not confused. This next slide is just current practice. I wanted people to see this before we transitioned into a conversation. As to how we're going to deal with tardies moving forward. Right now, if a student exceeds their nine absences, that would be excused. If it's a one trimester course and they have six unexcused or more, they actually wouldn't earn credit in a course. For a two trimester course, again, this is after the nine absences. So we're talking a pretty significant number. You know, if they had twelve unexcused in a two trimester course, they would lose credit. Or eighteen in a three trimester course, big numbers. You know, again, those are really significant. I thought it was important. This slide is repeated twice. That wasn't mistaken. It's on the beginning of this particular piece, talking about how we address tardies and what we're doing moving forward. And then it wraps up this piece as well. So if you look up at current practice, right now. If a student arrives to their first first period classes, the greatest impact we're going to see. I don't see many tardy issues during periods two through six in such particular first period class. If a student comes in twenty minutes or later, that class is actually considered now an unexcused absence, even if they end up going to that class. So that's pretty significant. We looked at trying to adjust this to be a little bit more flexible with students, but also holding them accountable. So what we're looking at doing moving forward is breaking it up into three categories. It being the amount of time they arrive late to a class. Obviously, our goal is to have the students arrive on time to class. But if they're up to fifteen minutes late to class without authorization, that would be counted as a quarter of an unexcused class absence. If it's between fifteen and thirty minutes late, that would count as a half of an unexcused class absent. And anything more than thirty minutes now, instead of that twenty-minute mark, would count as a full unexcused classic class absence. Now, those particular absences were would pertain to loss of credit. They would not pertain to zero through nine, like that zero through nine that students have for excused absences. It was pertaining specifically to this. We see this as helping kids be a little more accountable. You know, because we we truly have some students who after the twenty-minute mark, like say, why bother? Like, I don't even have to go to that class. It's going to be unexcused. But it also encourages students to get into the, especially that first period class on time. We don't typically see this as an issue once students are in school, but we think, you know, one sense it's a little more flexible, while we're not lowering the standard for our expectation for kids to be in class. Again, I don't see this as a significant impact on students. We don't deal with a lot of students around loss of credit, but it does come up at times. And that's going to be the next part of our conversation where we actually have in place right now a loss of credit appeals process. So once a student hits the numbers of concern, after they get a few warning letters, like you exceeded your absences, you're at the risk of losing credit, which is pretty significant. Because if you end up passing a course, but you lose credit, you'd have to take that course over. That wouldn't count for beyond your transcript. A student at this point could actually appeal the loss of credit. Parents and guardians are certainly involved. It's not the most thorough process, and we're looking to give students a little more of an opportunity. So this upslide is not easy to look at, so I apologize for this one. But this is a transition to our field process, which we're giving more of an opportunity. So it would be the responsibility of the student and the parent to initiate the appeals process. Keeping in mind, we're going to mail all of the information home, and we actually send an email as well to make sure there's one method of communication that this information is received. Within seven school days, we're expecting parents and the students to fill out the loss of credit appeals form. And then we can actually review it as a small committee, and if you read this slide in advance. A committee will be made up of a school counselor, the actual students counselor, one administrator, and a teacher. And they will have the opportunity to review the appeals form and make a decision. We're hoping that if you look at the after the number three, if requested, we're opening an opportunity for the parent guardian and student to actually meet with the appeals board. To go over all the reasons why consideration for restoring their credit should be, you know, a part of the decision-making process. That's something that has not happened too often. We think it will help. And the appeals committee will have the opportunity to make the final decisions. There will be no additional appeals. And in some cases, the the appeal will be denied, but in a lot of cases, we put students on conditional contracts, where if you do this, this, and this, we'll restore your credit. I have found in my eleven years at Can that these contracts are highly successful. The only times most likely that a student will not restore their credit. Is if the actual course they're taking doesn't matter for their graduation. Like if they took an extra elective, for example, senior year, and they don't need that credit, we don't see them go through that process. But we have several kids every single year on particular contracts looking to restore their credit. And the contracts we put them on with that require their signatures, parent and guardian signatures, have been quite successful, and our kids usually get their credit back. I see this as a lot more detailed of a process for our students who do lose credit. And keeping in mind, you know, that those numbers of six, twelve, and eighteen, those are after again the nine. So it's a pretty significant amount of class time missed. So I don't see these changes impacting a very high number of students. I do think some students will definitely be impacted by this. And we're looking again to have them in class so they can earn credit and be prepared for the next step in either their high school or beyond careers. So those were the overview of what we're planning on doing with the attendance as we move forward, starting next year. You know, any questions, happily try to answer them for you right now if you have them.
I have a question. So was this. Brought on by changes in state statute or based on what you were seeing in terms of increasing absenteeism?
So this aligns with the state board of ed and our board of ed policy around attendance. Like very very clearly, we spent a lot of time with the attorney from Shipman and Goodwin going through this as well. We thought the having an appeals process that's more defined would be better for kids. Because there are some students where we send the communication to parents and to students, and we get nothing back. And then the end of the school year or the end of the trimester, and there's no way for them to have any opportunity to restore credit. So we see this as actually better for kids. It's a little more of a process, but it's laid out very clearly where it gives students a chance. And again, we we rarely have said an absolute no to an opportunity to restore credit. We put kids on contracts, and the most common reason that students are not getting their credit is they're just not in class. So our contracts are based on being in class and having no unexcused absences, no tardies. And it's amazing, you know, once they have that contract, how how they're in class quite effectively. And, you know, we spend a lot of time with the students who are impacted by this to help them get to that credit mark. Because they have to get to that minimum of twenty-five in certain areas, obviously, before they can graduate. So I see this as actually helping, and that breakdown of the quarter, the half, or full. Is a little more flexible for students as well. It it's a little harder for us to manage. I mean, I think that that's going to be a little clunky at first, but we'll we'll be able to manage that. Because again, this will impact a significant number of students, but I do think it will help a lot of students. We're not looking to have students not earn their credit. I mean, you can see just by our graduation rate, that is not something that we focus on. We really work with kids, and this empowers the parents as well to have a little more say. And I do hope parents will. Parents will encourage that, that meeting with the appeals boards. I think that could be really effective. And in that situation, the counselor may know something that some people in the meeting may not know. We're looking at the assistant principals who know the kids really well. Also being and then a particular teacher could be rotating. And we're looking, you know, for an opportunity. This, we've discussed this in length, especially with coordinators. And we really think it's a good move for our students.
I would just, I would just add, you know, there's no state law that changed that requires these changes happen. But I think there's some linkage certainly to the mental health days in the college business. I think that. You know, when you add them together and we, you know, the, the college visits is something unique to Daniel Hand. Um, you know, other districts do it, but you know, I think the three was on the, on the higher end. And our students know about the mental health days. I think that that was something. I have colleagues that don't know about the mental health days, but I know we have, you know, stu- freshman students that know about the mental health days. And so um, they are, they are utilized here. And so I think that this is just another way to control and I think that also. Um, you know, as Mr. Salter said, most college visits do occur in the junior and senior year. That's what most happen. Doesn't mean they, the family can't bring the freshman along with the um, with the junior. It just means it would, you know, be um, an excuse absence or something like that.
Can you speak for TJ to? What is being done in what you do? When you begin to identify students that look like they're heading in this direction?
Great question, absolutely. So we send out a lot of letters, you know, when students start to get to. A concerning number of even excuse, like you're about to use all of your excused absences. You know, and we, a lot of communication with parents, no, a lot of, a lot of times I get an email, you know, my, my child's going to be out for the next week. We're going on vacation. You know, that's either five of your nine or it's after the nine, you know, it's unexcused. And that, that's a reality check for some and I, we send the handbook page, you know, pay attention. We even talk to the parents and the students about their schedule because if they have a lot of one trimester courses. You know, during that trip, all of a sudden that six becomes in play very quickly. We try not to, you know, deter some vacation plans, but you know, we, we have defined school vacations. That we would appreciate our parents taking kids up during those times. We also meet with students regularly. Mr. Bonner and Mrs. Witcher have two grades each. The, they meet with students depending on the severity, almost on a weekly basis. When it gets past the point of excused absences, it moves over to my office and we have, you know, supportive conversations. And that usually works, that's usually weekly. We, you know, make it, make the students, it seems like it's kind of random, but it's very planned. And we also follow policy on, you know, chronic absenteeism and tardy, you know, where we, you know, require a parent come in, have the discussion. We send the letters home, I inform Dr. Cook as well. There's not too, too many teeth in what we can do. But it's never a surprise and we're usually very successful. And the, the reactive meetings turn into some proactive positives. Like even the following school year, when we, we watched the students who were on our list last year of concerns. We call them and congratulate, you know, for being in school. So. You know, I don't love the fact that we're a lot smaller than we used to be enrollment wise, but you can see so many more students now in a bigger percentage. We actually have a pretty high success rate with most of our students and there's a lot of things that come into play. There's never a surprise. Like there's no way a parent, I didn't know this was coming. You know, sometimes we have to ask the parent what they need us to do, you know, and certain, certain circumstances, you know, Mrs. Witcher or Mr. Bonner on the phone in the morning. You know, but, you know, can you put your son on the phone? You know, get out of bed, you gotta get here. And that, that's been really effective as well. So we spend a lot of time on this, it's important. You know, we want the students there and there's so many checks and balances in place. And even when they get to what seems like the point of no return. There's another option where they can actually appeal and be placed on a contract, which again, we've had a lot of success for. The only ones. That Mr. Bodnar and I over our eleven years together and have been unsuccessful were kids who just, I don't need the art credit. I'm good. I don't have to appeal. I have my art credits and I'm already passed. Students who needed the credit, it's been really helpful. And we carry contracts into the next school year as well. It's not. A short term plan, we're trying to change behavior. And sometimes when they know, you know, in June thirteenth, when all of your friends are walking across the stage, you're not going to be. That's, that's quite a motivator for a lot of students.
I know that um, a lot of districts around the state are having, around the country, are having a terrible time with attendance. Um, post COVID. I don't think we count among the districts that have had difficulty bouncing back. Um, attendance wise, but just where do we stand is your understanding?
I, I'm, depends on the day, you know, like junior prom day, you know, we'll probably have a lot of mental health days. You know, and the students all who take those days know they can go to junior prom. You know, we have the four hour minimum limit where a student has to be in school for four hours to engage in anything after school. I, I don't see our overall attendance as concerned. You know, I do, every year it seems like there's a, a few more senior skip days that a lot of people think we approved. That, that doesn't exist, but overall, our attendance is really good. You know, certain days, you know, like the post-superbowl days, those type, I, I see concerns. This attendance issue is very specific to students who our SST identifies through. A lot of the, the visits, I'm not sure if you know exactly, but those are, Gail's probably talked to him like. Your Gail's office created a really good report, easy to run through Infinity Campus where it flags. Kids who are our school counselors get involved. I, I will say that school counselors do a good job. It's definitely a different impact if an assistant principal has you in their office or if you're in my office. It's, it's certainly more real in that case and we spend a lot of time. You know, in those situations and, you know, it's nice to connect with kids. I do think that relationship building sometimes to, you know, get that student over the hump. In coming into school and some have to check in in the morning and, you know, we spend a lot of time on that. So I, I wouldn't say we've seen. The completely negative impact on attendance that COVID caused in a lot of other places. But we definitely want to pay a lot of attention to it. There's some misuse, like, you know, the mental health days, for example, in my opinion, as well as college visits. You know, that are lined up and there's like students missing a lot of schools, so we're trying to just rein that in a bit.
So is this something that's going to be that published in a student handbook and like on the website?
It's going to be communicated nearing the end of this year. We thought it'd be a good idea to get it out there. It will be a separate communication preschool, you know, before the beginning of the school year. And then it will be within all of our handbooks. But you know, our website will be updated and it will be. A focus of our beginning of the year, small meetings with our students to go over anything that's changed. So they'll be fully aware and yeah, I, I, again, I don't see this impacting a lot of our kids. It, as you heard, a couple of our kids, a lot of our kids really like coming to school, you know, they. They, they appreciate that piece and I love hearing that from them. This, this will help a few of our students who really struggle getting into the building and we're trying to put supports in place to get them there. Again, we don't want them to have to stay, you know, an extra year, you know, in some extremely rare cases, it's really beneficial for a student to be there. An extra year, but that's a conversation that happens well before June of the graduating year. But I, I see this being clearly, clearly communicated and we'll talk often about it and. You know, we have a good plan for how we're going to roll out that communication. And for incoming freshman parents, it's pretty easy. It's just, you know, the way it is. I think the current mentors, well, this will be the most surprising because they have their college visits all planned. You know, for next year and their mental health days, a lot of them planned, you know, and that's an interesting.
And they're called senior skipping. But you know, especially the, the juniors, because I think, you know, if, if currently it's the nine, you know, excused absences, no matter what. Plus the mental health days. You know, you, you know, these students, they, they are planning them. So if the change is now, if you take the mental health day during that first nine, it's not an addition to, that is a big change for these high school students and. They definitely are going to have to pay attention to that.
Right, and if they use their nine, just they, they get two more. So like Dr. Cook said, our students know the mental health rules. I do, I, I do think the students would be like, seriously at first, but our, our students listen. And follow the rules and I, I do, I think this is better for kids and it will, it will help some parents as well. You know, when they're trying in the morning, I think everyone in here who's had a teenager, you know, it's, I always appreciated the fact that I would be out of the house before anyone was up. That was always a plus, because those are tough times. I don't see this as being really earth shattering to the, the majority of the school. And again, we're trying to rein in those students who are really at risk of loss of credit and then ultimately not graduating. That's pretty significant. Because we expect them to come back. They don't have to come back if they don't graduate. And that's something we try to avoid at all costs.
So, you know, it's an important issue, obviously. Um, being in school, I was offered in school, but beyond that. You know, learning those habits, that this is the number one issue that employers complain about. And it is the number one issue of why people are fired.
We have that conversation with students and said, if you, if this was your job, you would have been fired. And we have those conversations. We do think it's, it is habitual and you know, breaking that habit, especially over many years. It's really difficult to do. And I'm proud of the work of the high school. There's really a lot of focus on this. Again, I don't see this as bad for kids whatsoever. I think it's actually better for kids. Any questions? All right, and Dr. Cook volunteered to send out the first communication about this. Forget that, that'll be perfect. All right, so next again. So we, we've been looking at the academic integrity piece around cheating, around plagiarism and obviously the impact of things like AI. Pretty significant and just technology in itself, how easy it is for students to be able to share things. And we looked at making some changes that again, we actually think are good for kids. Give some teachers some flexibilities that they've been asking for, for about a year and a half, we've looked at this. For what we can do that would be really good for students, but by no means. Would send any message that things like cheating or plagiarizing would be acceptable. That's a really important piece. So what we stated. As we transition, this is current, this is what's in our code of conduct, literally a copy and paste. If a student is caught cheating or plagiarizing, first offense, they get a zero, they're not permitted to make up the assignment. They might get a two hour Saturday detention. We usually don't go disciplinary because of the academic consequence, but there could be a scenario. Where disciplinary consequence would be warranted. We always inform parent or guardian. And the counselor and the administration, because we keep track of this over the years and students. Currently, if they have two or more offensive offenses over their four years of high school, lose any opportunities for leadership. Or if they're in a leadership opportunity that's stripped from their actual position, because part of that leadership is character and that expectation is pretty significant. The second and subsequent offense includes all the first offense offenses. And possibly up to three days, we've never done that. Again, something really egregious if we needed to maybe. That, this, this approach seems pretty antiquated, so we work with our teachers. Talked with our senior class advisors or officers, great group of students. To come up with a better approach. And before we get into that approach. It is worth noting, Gail and I had this conversation that our expectation is that all of our teachers. At the start of next school year, in their syllabus or their, you know, course intro, talk about AI cheating, plagiarism and the approach. Because ideally, students are aware in advance as opposed to getting themselves. In a situation that could have pretty major academic consequences and other consequences with. Either being out of the running for consideration for leadership opportunities or having a leadership title stripped from them. So we're looking at what we think would be a lot better. So this is what we're looking at as an approach. First and foremost, we want the teacher who's involved with the student to actually have a discussion with the program coordinator or department lead. Just to ensure we're being consistent. That's a really important piece. We thought as fair as possible, a zero will be assessed for any part of the assignment. Involving the academic, academic dishonesty, dishonesty, but could result in a zero for the entire assignment. We've had situations where a teacher has found a small piece, for example, and they said, this zero, this kid cannot pass my course. If they get a zero in here. So penalizing them for the area where they actually it's confirmed dishonesty. But still giving them a chance was something our teachers have been asking for for years. We did not disregard the importance of the communication with parents, guardians, counselors and administration. And we also said that the assignments that we're giving our students are important. So we want them to be able to demonstrate their understanding. So at the discretion of the teacher, and obviously they're collaborating with the coordinator. We wanted to give the opportunity for a makeup assignment. Now, with that being said, that wouldn't have watched the initial grade because if it did, that this would be meaningless. And both grades would be entered into Infinite Campus and count towards the student's final grade. But it gives the teacher, the coordinator, an opportunity to have the student demonstrate their understanding. Now, obviously, there could be flexibility in the discretion and we thought that was important. We also left the two hour Saturday detention highly, highly unlikely. Again, the academic consequences in itself is pretty significant. So second and subsequent, so we're looking at, oh, these are all of the same things from the first offense. And again, we think they're really fair in the approach. The next part that we were going to add to the code of conduct, again, we, we left up to three days of suspension. Now, if a student like, for example, stole an exam and posted it online, they might get, you know, more than a two hour Saturday detention. But we are adding the loss of leadership opportunities to the actual code of conduct. That's in our handbook already. That's not a new practice. But when it happens, that, that hits hard to a student or to families. And the first thing we hear is where is it in the handbook? Where is it in the code of conduct? And I will say, when we have any student who is caught with an issue of dishonesty, cheating or plagiarism. The administrator falls home every time after they have a discussion with the student involved. And explains, if you get another offense similar to this over your years in high school. These are the opportunities that you're going to lose and we have the same conversation with parents. And that's proven to be very helpful over time. We just looked at, you know, with the learning curve for students, for example, if a teacher in an English class. Has a rubric and part of the rubric is about proper citation. And a student doesn't properly cite something in their actual paper, we're not even hearing about it. They're going to get. You know, a drop in their grade based on the rubric, teachable moment, move forward. That's just good teaching. It shouldn't be under the academic dishonesty piece. We see this as being much better for students and it gives them flexibility. For our teachers and I also, I, I like when students have to actually demonstrate their understanding on what we think is important. And it gives us that flexibility. The seniors, I brought them in the main office conference room and put this up and showed them and they're like, that, that's actually really good. I'm like, poke holes in it. And they, Eli was actually going to say for a little while, because he was part of that, said, you don't have to stay. I know you want to go and it's not as hot in here as everyone says it is and I'm usually a tough critic on the heat. But we see this as actually being really good for kids. This will, again, Diane, they answered probably a similar question. This will be heavily communicated at the beginning of the school year as well with our students. And even learning how to use AI as a tool is really important. We don't want that to be banned. That, that would be just going in the completely opposite direction of where we're trying to move as a school system. So that's teaching students the responsibility piece, you know, and we know we do have students who share, you know, assignments or. You know, do things that they shouldn't be doing and we've had students lose their captainship on an athletics team, not be able to. Be considered for National Honor Society, you know, those are all, you know, the privileges of good character and good decisions. Those aren't always open to every single student. The communication in, in advance really helps. Even when our students apply to be a captain, there's a form they have to fill out. And they get signatures from teachers and then the assistant principal they work with literally checks their disciplinary record. Um, record to make sure their character aligns with our expectations, because those are, those leadership positions are really important. We don't see too many of these situations. But we see the student who makes a bad decision, they, they have a chance to recover and it could be a teachable moment. But it still holds them accountable. By no means are we saying that this is something that we accept and it's not a big deal, because it is a big deal. I, I do know colleges and universities don't take these types of behaviors lightly. So we want to help students certainly get ready for that transition, but we also don't want one decision to. Automatically result in the inability, like that mathematical impact of a zero is really significant. So we see this as again, really positive and I don't think we'll hear too much negative, anything negative on this particular piece. Because overall, we think it's good for students and that, that piece right in the beginning of the new language where the. Coordinator and the teacher will talk will really focus on that equal opportunity piece. So. Two teachers in a civics class, two different classes have a similar. You know, situation with two different students, that coordinator can ensure the consistency piece because that's really important. And again, I, I think helping students understand. You know, what we expect is really important, but also they're navigating some tools and technology that are just. Evolving every day. It, it's amazing.
So there's um, one, I think, kind of gray area when it comes to um. Whether or not a student has like um dishonest or like plagiarism. So and I know this just because it actually happened. Um, so I know frequently teachers will ask students to like. Help edit other students' work, like they're allowed to go into the document and it. You can see the changes that they've made or suggestions that they make. And some students have actually taken another student's suggestion. Verbatim and put it in and not understood that that is plagiarism. And so then both students were called out on it, even though one was. Just sort of suggesting something, but because the other person used it. So I think. Like it was certainly unintentional. Um, and it was a, a, a teaching moment, right, for the teacher and the students. But it is something I think that. Could be highlighted better by the teachers to the students to say, although we want you to help each other and collaborate and provide suggestions. You cannot actually use exactly what they said, you know.
That's good, but. And the big learning curve for teachers too, you know, that collaborative piece, the use of technology. We're trying to front load those conversations in all courses. So students are aware. We're also looking at a lot of teachable moments, not. You know, automatically going discipline and code of conduct. And we, we're helping even art, I mean, students can have AI draw, you know, you know, some. You know, something they need for an art class and we don't wanna get to that point. Could it be a great tool? Absolutely. But we're, we're thinking more front end conversations. I will say the. The teachers with our current practice sometimes really struggle. I gotta follow the code of conduct. This is a zero, like they would have to get a one hundred on every single assignment the rest of the way to get a D. You know, and that's not easy to do. So this, this does help. And you know, again, if a teacher. Puts a paper in one of the AI checkers, there's all different ones now, and it comes a hundred percent AI, AI. We may not be that flexible. You know, you know, if there's a few sentences, that's teachable moments, that probably doesn't even come down to us.
And do the teachers actually do that? And they put everything in the AI check? Oh, wow.
It's interesting. Well, we get the hundred percent AI, the AI. Swear I did it all. It was all my work. I'm not really buying that. You know, the AI checker is really effective and the teachers tell the students like this, we do this. But again, we don't want them to avoid using those tools, but we want them to use them appropriately and. You know, not lose all the skills that they're typically developing before this stuff has come into play. It's. I do think what Gail has mentioned, the, the evolution of this technology is just what your cell phone can do now, what it couldn't do six months ago is unreal. And this, I, I will revisit this often because of. The technology side gets ahead of us really quickly. It's nice working with teenagers because they keep us up to date. But we think these are really good changes and. You know, we're ready to move forward with it. And again, that communication will be key at the start of the school year. I don't see this. Pushing any students like, oh my goodness, what happened? I think the attendance, a few of the changes will certainly, but it'll be okay.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all your work around this.
Thank you very much for your time, everyone. Have a great rest of your evening.
Yes, good job. And then the last piece I have for my report, I won't go in, in depth on this. I know Mr. Penn's gonna cover this in his uh, uh, committee report. But I just wanted to thank um, Gail for leading the work on the teacher eval plan. I shared some information with the board uh, in terms of the timeframes. The timelines have been incredibly. Tight and um, to bring a group to consensus. I think one of the big things that we had in our favor was. This is very similar to our current plan. And so Gail and I both fully expect um. And I know I've said something similar to this, but um, Gail and I both fully expected we will be in compliance with the state on uh, on teacher eval to start off next school year. And so um, you know, we have uh, done a lot of work on in that area. And just like I said, I want to thank Gail for. Working with the group she um, met several times over the last, you know, the last two weeks, just to get this to the finish line and be able to present it today. So. Um, like I said, I know, I know Stephen will cover that is uh, is okay. Um, and then just the last note, it, you know, as we talked about the HR being down this building, just watch your um, invites from Zoe. We got some dates changing, our location's changing. Not dates, um, in terms of some, you know, upcoming events, we don't want to, to miss it because they went to the wrong, wrong spot. So. Just uh, make sure you're watching the latest. And that's it.
Looks at you. Thank you. Uh, board member comments? Any comments? Yes, Diane.
Um, so I just wanted to make a couple of comments um, regarding uh, the AP review sessions. And so the first comment is, I think that we should develop some guidelines for the AP review sessions. So that um, the students have adequate time to um. Schedule them in with their, with their own schedules. And so maybe if we had some sort of guidelines for teachers to say. You know, your AP test is on this day, this many weeks um, before the AP test. I, if you're planning to do review sessions, give notice, you know, this many weeks before, schedule them, you know, this many days before, et cetera. And that way. Um, there's equal opportunity for all students um, in all of the AP. Courses that are being offered review sessions to adequately plan and then therefore adequately utilize the AP review sessions. Um, and then the second thing about AP is because um. Our referendum is a week from today um, for the um. Uh, budgets. By that time, our current AP review sessions should be over with, as I believe AP testing will be done. So prior to. Uh, the, after the budget vote, but before budget cuts are made. We should be able to have access to the statistics from this year as to how much the AP review sessions were utilized. And use that information going forward um, to help. Us make decisions about future AP review funding, but also take into consideration. Utilization based on what factors, you know, were there, was there adequate? You know, uh, yeah. So that goes against my comments. And it's really hot. So third comment, really hot, really.
Yeah, and um, I'll just take a very brief moment to echo what Craig said about. Um, our appreciation for the teachers and nurses. Um. We are uh, we're truly um, gifted to have some dedicated. Uh, really dedicated and, and excellent um, faculty here. Uh, in our district to clearly um. You know, the effort that they make and the pride they take in their work is amazing. You have some excellent nurses as well. Um, it's a, you know, Madison Public Schools is a special district. And, you know, credit a lot of that um, to uh. To, to what our teachers do and to how our staff look after our, our students. So thank you. Truly appreciate it.
I will learn that.
Yes.
Just a shout out to all the PTOs and also for um, really showing appreciation to our teachers and nurses. They go above and beyond and they really do a lot of work. It's a few people always. At all the schools on PTOs doing the bulk of the work. And a thank you to the parents who contributed because I, you know, without all that, it's. You know, the appreciation, I think is really felt by the teachers when, when the PTO does their. The work. So, thank you. And also night hand auctions on Friday.
So, and it's board member comments. Um, is there any audience response to the information presented? See, there's no audience here and we have none. Uh, raising their hand in the TV audience, so we'll move on. Uh, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Right, Diane, thank you. Um, any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Any questions? Um, passes, nothing? Oh, actually, the sales is seven, I think we have seven here tonight. Um, board committees and liaison updates, curriculum in student development. I know they had a good meeting this evening. Stephen?
Yes, um, we met this evening. Um, it was Kathy, myself. And Gail and Seth. We had two items on the agenda, wellness, unit adoptions. And the second item was the Madison education. Educated leadership evaluation plan. Uh, in terms of the wellness units. This is the last of over nine hundred units that have been developed by. By teachers. Uh, and the wellness. Curriculum. You know, was set, set in the meeting. It feels like it was a complete rewrite. From, you know, from the youngest right up to the high school. And I think, you know, I think that's true. In many ways. I mean, what it incorporated, where it used to be basically PE health. Was incorporating school counselors, social work standards. Health and PE standards, bringing all of those together. When you look at the essential element of what was driving. The, the work of a great number of teachers in this is. You know, Kathy spoke to it and it was so clearly student centered. And lifetime outcome focused. So then rather than, you know, what many of us may have experienced in school of. Advancing the PE and health curriculum and going through the different sports. Right from the get go, it started looking at, how do we develop these behaviors and attitudes? In young people and have them understand why we do the things that we do. Uh, and that was happening right from the K through five, where it used to be one dedicated health unit. Um, they added additional units. Part of the goal, and there are a number of goals and standards they work from was. You know, not for it to be just informational, but to have the students be active. In them, in their learning. And as I said, addressing the why of being health. Uh, being active and the health standards. There also are state requirements uh, that come into the development of the curriculum. Sexual assault, abuse, training, alcohol, nicotine, uh, prevention, drug prevention. And the school social workers, counselors. Were utilized in, in doing presentations of these areas. Uh, again, the curriculum shifted away from being sport based. Um, which is not to say they're not learning the skills of the sports, but much more a focus on physical skills. Also, you know, again, away from the sports more for the skills, social behaviors, teamwork. Uh, and then an expansion of the curriculum to more personal fitness and outdoor adventure. So this. Orientation that not every student is particularly sports oriented or. You know, enjoys that kind of competition, that there is a menu of choices. That allow them to be active and develop skills that they can take for the rest of their life. And then hand, I mean, the, you know, tremendous shift to. Offerings in the curriculum, outdoor adventure, leisure PE. Uh, lifetime pursuits, net games. Um, all of this developed after, which, you know, we all love. Really sampling the students and going, how could we design this better? How could we create? Something that is different than the standard PE sports um, focus. Profiles of the graduate are incorporated into the curriculum with a very heavy. Uh, focus on self-reflection and really students. Beginning to think about how they can continue activities and behaviors throughout their lives. Um, this was about half of the curriculum. The other half is gonna come up. In one of the next successive meetings because of the. Um, the review process that we do in Madison, uh, reviewing the units as being done in the second. Um, half of those. You know, it was very enjoyable presentation. I encourage you to look at the materials that are part of your packet. Second presentation was on the evaluation plan and. Uh, to truly appreciate that, you have to have a sense of. Uh, the history of what the state proposed some years ago, that Madison chose. About some ten, eleven years ago. Um. To not participate in because they felt that the pillars of that plan didn't correspond with the goals and what we wanted to do. Uh, cultivate and nurture with our teachers. And the focus of the current plan and the concern with the previous plan was the. The group that worked on the curriculum and looked at the evaluation plan wanted it to have the very heavily focused. Um, professional growth and development. You know, which is not to say there isn't accountability aspect to it, but the, the, the leading principle would be nurturing. With, through high standards, professionals that continue to grow and learn. What the State Department of Ed offered was. A plan with much greater flexibility than it has existed in the past. Um, which really moved, left an opportunity for Madison to shape it. Closely to uh, what we value and what, and what Madison has currently been doing. There were basically three options. They put out a model plan and they go, if you're, you know. If you're not happy with what you have and you just wanna adopt the state plan, you certainly can do that. And here's all the materials and the forms and you can step into that. The other option was you can adopt some of the standards of the state plan. Um, and bring in some of your own, as long as the required. Provisions of the plan are, are in your plan. And the third choice was you not take any of this and develop, you know, from the ground up. Here, your plan, as long as you comply with what the state requires. Madison chose to take the middle, which was because the current plan wasn't that far off. From some of what the state offered. Um. So, you know, this plan that is being put forth is an adaptation of their model. But with our choices and the things that are important um, to Madison. You know, without going into, in the interest of time, a lot of the details. There are curated levels in the plan. There are face to face meetings three times a year. Uh, there's a focus on climate, academic talent, systems and a. A Danielson rubric that the faculty and the leaders in our schools. Uh, were enthusiastic about. You know, as Superintendent spoke to the time. Timeline of developing, implementing, training and putting into place. Um, is challenging at best. Uh, so, you know, the fact. The, the team of people that worked on this under Gail's leadership. You know, prioritized this push that didn't cut corners and came forth with the plan is, I think, really appalling. They are seeking adoption and will seek adoption in the May twenty first. Um, meeting. Um, there was no public comment and we adjourned at six thirty five. Any questions?
Um, so I know that the teachers um, were involved in this and when you're seeking adoption, but does this have any impact on the union agreement with them? Like, does anything maybe be modified or?
No, the regulation requires that the recommendation come out of the PDAC and actions taken by the board. Um, there is union representation. There is union representation on the PDEC. So we have presidents from both unions on that PDEC as well as different levels of the organization. So.
So they're representative about that. So no changes have to be, no redemptions or anything like that. Thank you.
Yeah. And I have to say, just to add into that, we have a highly functional collaborative PDEC where for some districts, this change was unsurmountable and really difficult. We've had nothing but total agreement every step away. Nothing at all to say in terms of this.
And Mike Ginsberg was part of the presentation. He was at the table with So. I just didn't know if, even if they're involved in it, you know, it would require legal changes or?
Well, we're going into a teacher's negotiation anyway, so if it did, we'd be able to handle that. But I made a point of asking Michael, you know, as the.
Because that's not happening until fall, right? And if we adopt this, it would be at May twenty first. So there's.
Yeah.
Yeah, the difference between our current practice and the future practice.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you.
And fully supported, hundred percent.
Right. And just so people know, PDEC is an acronym for Professional Development Education, Educator Committee, which was the committee that worked together to put together the proposal for Educator and Leadership Evaluation Plan.
See.
Thank you.
That's a state mandated acronym.
Statement.
I have a question. It's a little off topic, but it's still for this area. So in the past, I know that, Gail, you presented to the curriculum committee about like how much professional development our teachers are getting, like you did a whole review of the year. And I was just wondering if we're going to get that annually? Like, because then it was presented to the board afterwards and I just thought it was a really great informative piece to have the whole board know like what professional development our, our staff is getting annually.
We certainly can provide professional development. We have, so yesterday, was it? Was it today? Today. How long is this week? And we have all of the activities and a grid for each school. But also another important piece that we just shared with John Michael, I think asked for it, was the state mandated trainees that are also part of that schedule and very.
But I mean, personally, I would like to see it like annually, just like this is all the PD that we did this year for our teachers, for our parents, et cetera. Because I know like, you know, some of it is state mandated and some of it we're doing as PD. And I think it would just be a very informative piece for the board so that going forward when we're doing our budgeting, we can see like, well, maybe we need a little more, or maybe we were right on target, like whatever, however it would be, you know, impacts a lot of budget.
I would agree with you. I think that's a really important point. And it was something that was really featured in the evaluation plan, with the professional development schedule and opportunities are a huge part in developing, developing the faculty. I also think it's, you know, it's a benefit to the general public to understand when we start talking about investing in teachers, what that means.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve? Please report, Steve. Thank you. Facilities committee also met tonight, Emily.
Yep, we met tonight. We talked about work going to be done over the summer and then looking ahead to planning cycle maintenance. Quick overview for summer, upcoming summer to twenty twenty four work. Overall, all the projects are on time. Net River Elementary School is in full swing, on schedule and on budget. Brown School's plugging along. The windows are on hold due to a funding issue, but we're hoping to have it funded a year from now. Holson bathrooms, biz are due next week. Hope to get that under construction this summer too. They said it's a little tight, that project, but that's the goal. We did spend some time talking about the complexities of the Holson HVAC work along with auditorium. As you can imagine, the HVAC will be potentially extremely disruptive, so they're sort of spending some good time thinking about the impact on students, how to phase that project in. Over the timeframe, Gilbane is working with Bill and Peter to help think about planning and facing and considering different options for that. Dr. Hook also asked Mrs. Hart to look sort of at the building and consider how they could use different spaces in the building to maximize work, do the work in a way that makes sense, both time-wise and education-wise. So to be continued, but they do look to have a schedule for work in place this fall that we can see. So. And then also part of that, the auditorium work, that's the lighting, the sound system in the chairs. Gilbane's also working with them on that. It'll be done next summer. They're sort of trying to figure out, do you do HVAC first, do you do auditorium first, how that timing and facing? So lots to consider, but everything is moving along otherwise. And then you may have seen the emergency storage construction underway by the facilities area. They'll also talk briefly about planned and cycle maintenance. As you may know, the planned and cycle maintenance is sort of the planned work, carpeting, flooring, painting, lighting, minor renovations. He said they spent a lot more this year than in years past upfront with Brown's full being a priority area. Plus, as we all know, the rooftop, you know, is at the high school. So just something to consider as we look ahead, as he said, you know, you can never have enough, as you can imagine, for sort of ongoing maintenance, keeping the buildings functioning and in good condition. Looking ahead to planning cycle maintenance twenty twenty five, some highlights, brown signage and wayfaring for the pre-K and kindergarten areas, parking areas, moving expenses, millwork, the kindergarten play area, those are all on the horizon. And then we talked a little bit, a good question was raised about a lot of this work, as Bill said, next summer is going to be busy as summer in terms of the work that again, anyone can recall with all these constructions. So Diana had asked, with that in mind, where is the center of school year going to happen with Holson under construction brown, the new school? So we could talk about options, you know, Jeffrey will still be here on campus and Ryerson. So there are spaces I just will leave. There's no public comment and you adjourned at seven sixteen. I don't know if anyone from the committee wants to add anything who was there. Just that the, the schedules have not yet been determined. They're still working on it for, you know, the, the Holson projects, the HVAC and the auditorium. So it's not that there's any project on hold, it's that they still haven't yet determined the best schedule of which to start first and how to proceed. And they're working on that this summer so that the decision will be hopefully done by fall and then everyone will know, the community will know what this likely schedule will be. But the work was determined, it was not going to start yet. It's not scheduled to start until the summer of twenty twenty five, but that they're working on a schedule. And when they know the schedule, we will know the schedule and then everyone else will know the schedule.
Bill can speak to the concept that going from seven schools to four schools won't necessarily result in savings as it relates to maintenance because the new standards, the new buildings and the new work requires, you know, is more technical, is more advanced. You know, things like filters and so forth are going to have to be changed, remember on process and the COVID standards and so forth. So it was, it was a heads up for that. It isn't just the one-to-one ratio that, you know, there are challenges with some of the new technology. And then a sidebar, they spoke briefly to, you know, the process of monitoring all of the maintenance and the software that's used and the complexity of, you know, some of the software and learning when the filters may be, you know, need changing, getting a more idea of the things.
Thank you.
Anything else? Further questions? Thank you very much. Finance committee, Gail.
We did not meet in our next meeting. It was time first.
Thank you. Personal committee, Maureen.
Yes, the personal committee did need to start our discussions with Team Strish Union. And we have our second meeting scheduled for the twenty seventh.
Policy committee, Diane.
We have not met since the last meeting. Our next meeting is May twenty first at six thirty, which unfortunately also coincides with the induction of National Honors Society, so some of us will not be there. With regards to this evening's meeting, we have four policies as action items. There are policies that are up for rescission. They are our first read tonight, but we're asking to waive the second read and rescind these policies tonight. You have in your packet, policy summary with notes from shipment and the one explaining the reasons for these recissions. And also we have six policies up for a first read, three of which are the nine thousand series, which again will require two-thirds of them from the board. And if you have any questions on anything, feel free to ask me. There's also a regulation in your packet this evening, which does not require any action by the board, but is certainly great reading. So, but it's just a sort of FYI regarding the regulation regarding communications. And if anyone has any questions, I will try to answer.
Seeing none, thank you very much. And then the Learn liaison report, Mary Ann was unable to be here this evening. She's traveling. But she did ask me to disseminate a flyer that she received when she went to the last Learn meeting. She reported about it last meeting and she was able to get her hands on the flyer. I apologize that the writing is kind of small, but I will hand these out. And this is for the I Choose Success ICS program that is put on by Learn and is sponsored by General Dynamics. It's an opportunity as a program. This program will ideally consist of a series of twelve regularly scheduled ninety-minute sessions with cohorts of up to twelve students. Participants will be led through self-exploration activities in small groups on topics such as identifying and building personal strengths, leadership of self and others, virtual hands-on career exploration, building positive, authentic relationships, sphere of control, influence and impact, getting the job and keeping the job, being a part of a dynamic team. So I think the concept is this is very similar to the type of work we are teaching our students and our in our I think I have CTE. In our CTE class, Career Tech Ed program, but it also adds a little bit of like career readiness and advisory for students who may be interested in career paths other than college. So, yeah, might be complimentary for us to consider along with our award-winning awesome CTE. And that's it for committee and liaison reports. So now we need one with some action items. Action item ten. I need a motion to waive the second reading and rescind the following policies. Fifty-one seventy activities, beings, charges. Fifty-one hundred point nine point four, physicals for school athletics. Fifty-one thirty awards, honors and scholarships. Fifty-one eighty point four, using schools for students for publicity purposes. By Diane, seconded by Maureen. Any discussion on those? Rescind. All in favor, aye. All opposed, nay. Any extensions? It is unanimous, seven, nothing. Thank you. Action item eleven. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting.
So.
Diane, I have a second. Any discussion or recommended edits or? All in favor, aye. Opposed, nay. The extension, seeing none. Motion carries seven, nothing. Thank you. Do they have future? So, okay. Twelve, any future agenda items? The request for agenda items, thirteen, a German, the motion. Diane, seconded by.